Good evening. Select called November 4, 2019, meeting of the University City Council. Mrs. Thomas, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Rock.
Here.
Ms. Weisman.
Here.
Mr. Sims.
Here.
Mrs. Pardee.
Mr. Erdel.
Here.
Mrs. Cameron. Mrs. Wise.
Sir, motion to excuse Mrs. Pardee, Mrs. Weisman, Mrs. Cameron. Second. Fair discussion. Saying that, Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
Mr. Rock.
Aye.
Ms. Weisman.
Aye.
Mr. Sims.
Aye.
Ms. Erdel.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Well, all those who are able, please rise for the pleasure of reading this. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we're, uh, let's see, we have a, uh, next section of the agenda is the approval of minutes. There are two sets of minutes that were distributed with council package. Is there, are there any corrections, additions, or motions pertaining to these minutes? Sir, motion to approve the Monday, October 7, 2019 minutes, City Council. Any, we don't want to see, any should just move to table. Is there a motion to table the October 7, 2019 minutes?
So moved.
Second. Okay. Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
Mr. Rock.
Aye.
Ms. Weisman.
Aye.
Mr. Sims.
Aye.
Mr. Erdel.
Aye.
Okay, I mean, the October 23, 2019 minutes. Everybody who is here, oh, no, Mr. Weisman was not here at that meeting. Is there a motion to table the October 23, 2019 minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Saying that, Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
Mr. Rock.
Aye.
Ms. Weisman.
Aye.
Mr. Sims.
Aye.
Mr. Erdel.
Aye.
Okay, both sets are tabled. We are now at the section of the meeting where we accept comments from the audience. Speakers are limited to five minutes for a total of 15 minutes per view. If there is anybody who would care to address the city at this time, please come up to the podium, speak clearly into the microphone, state first your name and address for the record, and you may have up to five minutes. Is there anyone here who would care to address the city?
Hi.
Hi.
Uh, just wanted to get some feedback.
I need your name first for the record and address. And you need to speak into the microphone, please.
Janina Billis. Uh, I have a question about the pros and cons about new crosswalk between Mayor Brook and Fairmont Boulevard, and do we gain money with this project, or do we lose money on this project? I have a video on my cellphone. It's job security for people who did this project, because it's always malfunctioning, and it's always a problem. You know, I'm sure you made some investigation. You have a video about three or four accident, car accident. Your police were there, with ambulance, taking care of the, you know, people who were driving by. And I have a video with this flashing light, two, three days in a row, it's flashing light. I do not know how you're going to handle snow. Usually the snow cloud goes on a flat surface. Are you, if somebody invested a wire that's going to make, make the snow melt, are we going to have more problem? And this company addressed the construction, received probably $200,000 on this project. Who is benefiting more, construction or the city?
Do you have anything further, Mrs. Misses?
I have a question about feedback about this project.
Well, this is a public forum section. If you care to address the city, this is your time to speak. This is not a Q and A session. If I have something I would like to say at the conclusion of your remarks, I may do that, or I may not, or anybody else in the council.
I'm sorry, what did you say? I lost, what did you say?
I was saying, this is a public, this is, this section of the meeting is for comments from the audience. It's not a Q and A session.
No.
If you have, you, you are welcome to speak up to five minutes about things that pertain to the city that are on your mind, but this, this is not a cross-examination, it's not a Q and A session. So if you have concerns about the crosswalks, you're welcome to say so here.
Let me know when it's going to be next time meeting, it will be Q and A question. Could you update me for the next meeting that I can come and get the answer about this?
This is the first time hearing these questions, and that's something that, and the, a member of the staff can address that.
Member of the staff.
I know you've come by our City Hall before. Uh, there have been times when you have sat and have demanded answers to certain things. I've invited you to fill out a public records request. I have not seen one.
This is why you came here?
Okay, well, you're still welcome to fill out a public records request if there are documents you are seeking. Uh, this is not a Q and A session, however.
Well, that's what you say. If it's not a Q and A question, give me an option when it's going to be a meeting with a Q and A session.
We don't do that.
You don't do that?
No, no, we have these council meetings with the, the, uh, with comments from the audiences, a particular item, there, there aren't meetings where we have just Q and A sessions.
So what do we have to do if we have a question about the project that we cost the city more than $200,000?
Well, you are welcome to send that question to the city, and somebody may get back to you.
Well, could you give me the name of the person, could you get back to me?
You are welcome to email that to info@universityheights.com.
To me, that probably won't get me.
I'm not going to answer any more questions, Mrs. Misses, you're using up your time. If you have things that you would like to address the city about, uh, you and I have been over before how you've abused my staff, and, and I don't abide by that. There's a lot of things I would put up with, but when you came into my, onto our City Hall and you were yelling at my assistant, you were yelling at the communications director.
I was not yelling at anything, I don't yell at anyone.
Yes, you were. And I'm not going to argue with you further. You may use this time to address the city. The floor is yours.
Okay, we'll see if I, for what happened with this project, if you don't want me to talk about it. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wants to address the city? Saying nothing further, uh, we will go on to the reports and communications from the mayor and the taking of action. We do not have any contested races for City Council or School Board this year, and I chalk that up to the community support for the work we've been doing so far these past two years. Nevertheless, I encourage the community to go out and vote. In addition to our fine candidates for council and for school board, there are two county issues on the ballot. First, our county charter is still new enough to be a work in progress. I'm a yes on issue six, refine, refine the appointment of our county sheriff, and should achieve a healthy balance of both autonomy and accountability in that office. Finally, a yes on issue three, in support of try C, gives our county's community college much-needed funding while it continues its mission of providing high-quality, accessible, and affordable educational opportunities, while serving as an economic driver in the region. I'll see you at the polls tomorrow. Since our last meeting, I took a meeting with an anticipated new bond council, and see item B on the agenda for that. I joined my fellow mayors and managers in honoring Richard Pope with the George V. Boynovich Award. I attended an economic development workshop sponsored by the Urban Land Institute. Mayors and other public officials from all over northeastern Ohio participated, including Lynn Hurst, Mayor, Patrick Ward, Bedford Mayor, Stan Kochi, Shaker Heights Economic Development Director, Laura Engelhardt, and our own Councilman John Rupp. Just to name a few. I attended and announced awards at the Jay-Zoo Bolt 5K and One Mile Fun Block in support Jay-Zoo School. I attended the Heights Career Tech Fair and served as the judge of the various displays and student presentations. We took a meeting with the federal representative of the 2019 census, Mike Cook, and we'll talk more about that in his report. I took a citizen meeting to discuss landscaping improvements at the vault and at the Fenwick Avenue special. The County Planning Commission met, and we will be announcing any day the selection of the new County Planning Commission Executive Director. Our former mayor, Susan Enbelt, has been serving in an interim capacity this year while we engaged in a national search. I am grateful for her service this year, and I look forward to sharing the name of our new executive director, who has experience not only locally, but around the country, and will bring in the broad perspective we need in the Kyoka County. While being intimately familiar at home with our county, but with the challenges of the first suburbs, communities like University Heights, Shaker Heights, Cleveland Heights, East Cleveland, being the four cities that I represent on the Heights Ceiling Commission. This is not a vigorous meeting since the last meeting, but just to name, just to give you a few highlights when you get the idea. Finally, the city took two meetings since the last meeting regarding the former KFC property, 2115 South Taylor. The second meeting was scheduled, when the owner didn't attend the first meeting. The second meeting was today, and despite our admonishment that he attend and not just send representatives without authority to commit to a plan, he once again declined to appear. His lawyer says that he's a busy man, busy businessman. Apparently too busy to take a meeting with the mayor, the law director, the building commissioner, and the economic development director of a city where he has owned an iso of a property for over three years, and has done nothing but to clean it up or fix it up, not even pull the weeds and haul away the junk scattered around the site. It does not appear to me that he is serious in working to clean up this property and restore it to a productive use here in the city. But we will not be daunted. I want to assure the community and the folks at Cedar Taylor in particular, that we will keep working to clean up and approve the Cedar Taylor district. We will not countenance further delay tactics from the dilatory owner of this public nuisance property. On a more positive note, this is the last city council meeting before the civic awards. Mike Cook will report more on that later, but if you haven't already gotten your ticket yet, do so now. I think we're up to about 132 attending, and the Jardine Room holds maybe 170 or so. So don't buy yourself eating a Cooper's table in the basement. Get your tickets now. Thank you. This is my report. First item on the agenda is a motion to hold an executive session immediately. It says immediately following this regular meeting, but really it is immediately, for the purpose of discussing personnel, legal, and other real estate matters. There are two items that we need to go into executive session about at this time before we conduct any further discussions. Uh, one is a real estate and legal matter, and one is a personnel and legal matter. For the personnel and legal matter, I would ask that we have the current members of council together with the law director. And then for the, uh, real estate and legal matter, I would ask that we have the current members of council, the law director, the presumed to be elected members of council who appear to be both here, uh, as well as Susan Drucker, our economic development director, and Dennis Kennedy, our finance director. And just for the record, Barbara Blightfeld and Justin Wood, who are presumed to be elected members of council. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right, discussion. Saying that, Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
Mr. Rock.
Aye.
Ms. Weisman.
Aye.
Mr. Sims.
Aye.
Okay, uh, we will retire to the green room, so the folks that are here do not have to leave. We will step out. We will begin first with the personnel matter, and then we'll come back for the folks we need for the, uh, real estate. Thanks. So moved. Okay, motion by Mr. Weisman, second by Mr. Sims. Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
Mr. Rock.
Aye.
Ms. Weisman.
Aye.
Mr. Sims.
Aye.
Mr. Erdel.
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron.
Aye.
Okay, we are back on the record in our regular session. Next item on the agenda is item B, motion to authorize mayor to enter into representation agreement with Brickner and Eckler for Economic Development Council services related to University Square. Uh, I met with Bryce Finley, Catherine Swartz. When I say I met, really we met, it was myself, it was Susan Drucker, it was Dennis Kennedy, and Luke McCallum-Bill. And, um, Mr. Finley and Ms. Swartz, our economic development services in connection with University Square. We hope to have some things happening in short order where we need their services post-haste. So, um, I would ask that, uh, this council approve, uh, the entering on behalf of the city, the representation agreement that's included in the document. Mr. Weisman.
Aime, Mr. Mayor, um, so Brickner and Eckler would be our bond council then, as we move forward with whatever may or may not happen with University Square?
Uh, yes, I mean, they, they may not be willing to write in the bonds, but they do, they're getting all the bond out.
And this is a position that was, we had a, P. G. Benjamin from Calpe was our previous bond council.
Correct.
She's no longer going to be our bond.
That is correct.
So we need someone to do this.
We do need somebody to do this, and she is no longer available.
I trust the administration has a significant comfort level over the folks at Brickner and Eckler?
The administration does. And that was confirmed especially after we had our meeting, uh, by me. Is there a motion?
Yes, I move to authorize the mayor to come into representation with Brickner and Eckler for Economic Development Council services related to University Square. Uh, I would like to add to the motion, uh, that, um, they have to apprise council before they raise their rates, and the letter of representation has their rights in there. Um, so I guess I would be more comfortable if they had the time to ask if they decided to increase the rates from the numbers from the letter.
So that's a stated right. And I'll second the motion. That's a, that's a reasonable condition of the administration, and we make a motion by Mr. Weisman and a second by Mr. Sims. Can you approve the discussion? There is none. Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
Mr. Rock.
Aye.
Ms. Weisman.
Aye.
Mr. Sims.
Aye.
Ms. Erdel.
Aye.
Very good, motion carries. Item C, motion to accept the bid from Hastings Air Energy Control Inc. by Uten as the best bidder for Source Capture Vehicle Exhaust System, SCES, for the fire department in an amount not to exceed the bid amount of $49,900 minus the prepayment option savings of 3%, $1,097 for a total cost of $48,003. Chief, Brickner, move to the floors.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. Uh, reviewing the number that I provided for you, uh, these two bids that were received, um, you have the Hastings Air's Energy Control for the 499, um, with a 3% discount of a thirteen, uh, $1,345. Um, this was from the FEMA grant, the FEMA AFG grant that we were awarded this year. Uh, that was for $55,000. FEMA was funding $52,380 of it, and then the Kyoka County is going to pick up our matching funds of $2,609.05. Looking at the comparison chart that I provided there between Hastings Air and Clean Air, two systems that bid, um, Hastings Air Plime Event is the one that I am recommending. As you can see from the warranty, uh, both offer a five-year, but Hastings Plime Event has an additional 10-year on the aluminum rails, which is the bulk of the system that they're going to install to the apparatus Florida station. Um, next down, the prepayment discount, uh, number was provided by Clean Air, uh, 3% from Hastings Air. No exceptions were noted in either bid. However, I found on paragraph 13 from Clean Air MagnaGrip that it did not meet our recommendations to have a 360-degree swiveling nozzle. So the nozzle's the part that connects to the exhaust pipe on the truck. Um, the MagnaGrip needs to be set very specific and direct onto the trucks. You need to be having a person directly in front of the pipe that's putting out the diesel exhaust that we're trying to capture, where the Hastings Plime Event can be connected at any angle. Um, cad drawings were not required for the bidding recommendations, however, Plime Event did provide them. Clean Air did not provide cad drawings nor a sketch. In fact, they were unsure exactly how they would design the system, even though they did bid on it. Safety disconnects were something that we were requiring, which were included in the bid for Plime Event, a $4,000 value. MagnaGrip indicated that they were included, but it does not indicate, uh, what type of safety connect they'd provide, and I could not find any information on our website other than they said it was not needed. NFPA is a National Fire Protection Association with the standards that we tried to meet. Uh, 1901 has to do with apparatus in general. Uh, does not allow for any object to protrude past the radius of the vehicle. Um, the Hastings Plime Event meets this standard because it has a low-profile exhaustive connection where the MagnaGrip protrudes past the truck. As far as corrosion resistance, uh, Plime Event was also better because it offers this black armor technology, uh, which is corrosive and abrasion resistant. Again, the connection, Plime Event is better because of the magnetic fastening that allows you to connect it at various angles. So you have this 22-ton truck backing into a building with a person standing there to make this connection, and we want it to be easy for them so that they can make it quickly, get out of the way of the truck, and get out of the way of, of the diesel bits. Um, as far as an expandable system, again, Plime Event is the only one that offers this. Although it's not something we're looking to use at this time, uh, they do make a table that has a ventilation system so that we can run small tools like our saws in it, um, rather than running them outside or into the station and having those exhaust fuses in it into the station. Um, the only reason we really want to look into that at this time is just because we don't really have the space to put it. Also interoperability, um, last year, Cleveland Heights Fire Department had a funeral where we had one of our apparatus go to one of their fire stations, um, to cover them in their time of funeral procession. Uh, we have a few bordering communities in our mutual aid departments that has this Plime Event system, so if, um, well, their trucks came to our station and vice versa, we would be able to connect to each other's systems, um, where MagnaGrip is not in our local mutual aid response system. Uh, we kind of covered safety as far as the connection points being easier made, and then there were some recommendations on the second page just about, uh, an issue Strongsville had with the MagnaGrip system, and as far as Mentor, Brexville, Richmond Heights, and Shaker Heights, all going out to bid with both of these companies and selecting Plime Event as well. Shaker Heights in particular is well noted because, uh, their Station Two on Warrensville Sun Road is, is similar in ours, in the, uh, manner that it, uh, also, uh, is at least 60-years-old and has some size limitations for this type of a system. MagnaGrip indicated to them, as well as they did to us, that they were unsure exactly how they would design it. They chose to also pick Plime Event and Shaker Heights, and they were able to accommodate the older building and the needs, so, uh, therefore, I am recommending them. Uh, the total price is $48,403, with a 3%.
Very good, thank you, Chief. Anybody have any questions for Chief Brickner?
Mr. Weisman, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, uh, I guess maybe this was a little longer, but both of these are under the, uh, the grant funding of $55,000.
Right.
Is our, is our, I mean, we're still, which is a difference for us to make up, we're still under the total grant funding for this.
Correct.
And is the 20, our match of $2,600, that's coming out of our pocket?
The county has elected to pick that up.
Okay, so we're spending no money on this today, this improved new system. Well, I think this is fantastic. Like I always say, if we can bring stuff in without paying money, that's really our preference up here, so, thank you, Chief. Good job, I'm glad to, glad to recommend the one that, that you're choosing. Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Weisman. Any other questions?
No. What I'm not saying, no, that I would just like to, uh, thank the chief for his thorough and complete explanation of why we would be asked to approve the bid that is obviously the best, but not necessarily the lowest, uh, in this instance, uh, even though it is for grant cover. I think your explanations will be important to, um, the grant tours, that will be happy to know if I would make this decision. And with that, Mayor, I would make a motion that we, um, approve or accept the bid from Hastings Air Energy Control Inc. the Plime Event as the best bidder for Source Capital Vehicle Exhaust System for the fire department in an amount not to exceed the bid amount of $49,900 minus the prepayment option savings of $1,497, therefore, for a total cost of $48,403.
Second.
Okay, with motion by Mr. Sims, a second by Mrs. Cameron.
Is there any further discussion?
Just to clarify for the record, Mayor, that the legal standard is lowest and the best bidder is not necessarily the lowest bid, and, um, if a municipality has other reasons for considering applying to the best bid, as Chief Brickner and Councilman Sims have pointed out, then it has a discretion.
Thank you, Mr. Weisman.
Correction, so, no.
Any further discussion? There's nothing further. Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
Mr. Rock.
Aye.
Ms. Weisman.
Aye.
Mr. Sims.
Aye.
Mr. Erdel.
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron.
Aye.
Very good, motion carries. Thank you, Chief Brickner.
Thank you.
Next item is item D, ordinance 2019-65, enacted codified ordinance, Chapter 1490 of the housing code entitled Point of Sale Inspection and Repealing, Chapter 1474.10, Chapter 1474.11, and Chapter 1429.09A1, and 1429.0982. This is on second reading. Mr. Ruben Myers, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, before beginning, council, um, set at your desks to, uh, this evening was a, a revised version of the point-of-sale legislation, the only change being that, um, currently was being considered, um, entitling the chapter of 1490. Uh, after further review, um, it was found that there already exists a 1490, it was just a, a way that our codified ord- ordinance is read online and made a little difficult to, to see that. So, um, there is an update, um, that the, the chapter would be, uh, numbered 1488.
And I knew that and went ahead and read it as 1490, anyway, it's still 1488. So, this is, sorry, the first of the optional, or the candid motion to amend prior to the motion.
Thank you.
With Mr. Ruben Myers, if you would continue.
Um, so, for, for sake of brevity, um, I know I went at length, um, at the last meeting, highlighting the, the changes for the, the proposed language for the point-of-sale inspections, um, but one of the things I wanted to make sure that I touched on is that, um, we did include the, the language on the city's website, the proposed changes, um, as well as the financial analysis, or the, the numbers that helped us, uh, demonstrate how we arrived at the increase in fees, raising the single-family inspection fee from $150 to $250, and the two-family, uh, $200 to $300. We included all of that information on the website. Um, we did email it out to 15 real estate agents who, um, were our frequent buyers or frequently represent clients here in the city, as well as, uh, recent, uh, real estate, uh, agents who had been into the housing department, but it was also on the city's website, um, with a link there for all to see. Um, we did hear one bit of feedback, um, but nothing that I would, um, address as being substantive to the point-of-sale, but more looking at how could the housing department improve its operations, and I think, um, based on my director's report last meeting, I think in large part that would be addressed through our introduction of the Citizen Service Act here, um, starting in December. So his, uh, his response was hoping that we would see kind of an increase in, um, timeliness of reports and things of that nature, not, again, not necessarily substantively addressing some of the proposals in the point-of-sale amendments.
Very good. Mr. Rock?
Okay, Mr. Ruben Myers, just to verify that, you know, the feedback you received was on the fees itself either, correct?
Correct.
And that the fees were related to substantiate the cost of the program.
Correct.
Okay.
Very good. Any other questions from Mr. Ruben Myers? Any discussion? Is there a motion?
Mayor, I would move to amend ordinance 2019-65 to re-enact the codified ordinance, Chapter 1488 of the housing code entitled Point of Sales Inspection, and repealing Chapter 1474.10, and Chapters 1474.11, and Chapter 1424.09A1, and 1424.09A2.
Very good. A motion by Mr. Sims to amend. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Weisman. Any discussion on the motion to amend? Second by Mrs. Thomas, speak, all the way.
Mr. White?
Aye.
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mr. Erdel?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Very good. That passes, and this is so amended to 1488. Is there a motion to adopt Ordinance 2019-65, Enacting Codified Ordinance Chapter 1488, December? Submoved.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Weisman, second by Mr. Rob. I'm sorry, did I miss? Was that Mr. Corbin's motion?
I missed the second.
Oh, the second. Okay, very good. Motion by Mr. Weisman, second by Mr. Rob. Any discussion? Second by Mrs. Thomas, speak, all the way.
Mr. White?
Aye.
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mr. Erdel?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Very good. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Corbin Myers. Item E is motion to accept bid from the lowest and best bid for the 2019-2 Citywide Tree Printing Removal Project and entering the contract for this, and Mr. Corbin, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Some time ago, I came to you asking for authorization to bid our fall tree planting or tree pruning program, which actually goes through the winter. It's a citywide pruning program. And last Friday, the number first, we opened bids for that. We had only one bidder, Parks Tree Incorporated of Eastlake. They have done tree pruning for us for the last two years. In fact, they've had the last two pruning contracts. They have done a good job, and their bid and pricing is fair and equitable for the work involved, and I am recommending that we authorize a contract with Parks Tree of Eastlake for $89,498 for this year's tree pruning project.
How much would you say? Eighty-nine?
Eighty-nine thousand, four hundred and ninety-eight.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Corbin. Any questions for Mr. Corbin?
Is this citywide, or are we doing a segment of the city?
This is citywide, however, it'll be focused in the Zone Two area of Cedar Road, south to East Carroll Boulevard, and South Green Road, west to Bel Farm. So it's mostly in that northeast section. However, other trees that need to be attended to are also attached.
Very good. Any further questions for Mr. Corbin?
Mr. Weisman, thank you first of all for the bid information, for all the detailed information about your trees. You've done a great job in the last couple of years of warning the residents that this is going to happen. I hope you do it again this year so people get kind of upset. I don't have to tell you, since you're the service director, when you come and mess with their trees, so I appreciate the efforts that we've been doing so far. I hope you continue those.
We will do so.
Thank you.
Mr. Weisman, they can bring up that point. Thank you, Mr. Corbin. Any further questions? Yes, Mr. Rob?
So we have an arborist who will be present with during this exercise. Are they there to oversee, or to review, or to give guidance? I know there's the, there'll be some pages of notes here. Okay, so they will be on-site when the pruning is taking place?
That is correct. And not every day, not every tree. But they, we start out with the contractor, explain what we expect them to be doing, follow them for several trees several days. And then any questions that they might have, we go back, we review. Any questions any resident might have, we go back, we review. But we are not with them every single tree every day.
Okay, but a tree that would have some major pruning or removal, the arborist would see that?
Correct. All of the items in your list that I provided that are on Code Four?
Code Four.
Are removals.
Okay.
Code Three would be heavier pruning. Code Two would be a light pruning. Code One is basically removing the lower ring of branches only. And Code Five are small trees, young tree training, which they'll take about 25% of the tree away, making sure that the tree has a main leader for future growth streaming.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Rob. Any other questions for Mr. Corbin? Yes, Mr. Sims. Do you have any idea while we have on the deal?
I spoke, we got the bid out to several other companies, and I spoke to them. They told me that because of recent storms and other things, they did not have time to look at the bid. It was quite a few trees you had to go through and look at and price out individually, and they would not have time to get to it. That's what they told me.
And I don't know if this bid compares directly with the bid last year in terms of the number of trees and, you know, the mix of, you know, those technical ones, two, three, fours, or fives. But does this total number, how does this total number compare with what we paid for this contract last year?
This contract is larger than last year's contract, and so is the bid total. However, I did look at individual pricing on sizes of trees and types of pruning, and it's very comparable to the pricing we had last year. If I remember correctly, I think last year we were about $72,000.
Any other questions? Anybody else?
There aren't any. We are only to accept bid from Park Tree Incorporated of Eastlake, Ohio, in the amount of $89,489.
Ninety-eight.
Ninety-eight dollars. Eighty-nine thousand, four hundred and ninety-eight dollars as the lowest and best bid for the 2019-2 Citywide Tree Pruning/Removal Project and entering into a contract for the same.
Very good. We have a motion by Mr. Sims. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Erdel. Any further discussion? Second by Mrs. Thomas, speak, all the way.
Mr. White?
Aye.
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mr. Erdel?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Very good. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Corbin.
Thank you.
Okay, next round of adjournments. Motion to hold the executive session, we are requiring Mr. Corbin to make the purpose of discussing the personnel they want over real estate matters, how it suggests for out of interest of time that we pass on that to this junction. So there's no objection, and no further executive session. All right. Reports, finance.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. I've been on the job here for nine days, so have spent those nine days trying to measure mostly compliance in terms of what the city is required to do, either by state, county, or bespoke code. And also have just started to meet with all the department directors. I hope to get through the majority of them this week, not only to confirm what their outlook is for 2020, but to see what's going on between now and the end of the year so that we can make whatever appropriate actions need to be made prior to the year-end. I've met with the MCO for Bureau of Workers' Count. I worked, going to meet with the TDA also this week. Have met with Dollar Bank, and in terms of compliance, one thing I'll be bringing to you is in ordinance establishing them as a public depository. That's recorded to be done in five years. It's never been done here, but I can see. We'll also be doing that with whatever investment company we have. Right now, all the investments were a third. I'll be meeting with them this week, too, and we'll probably come back with some recommendations to the council, the mayor, about changes in the investment policy if we need to get that up to date. And there's probably a couple of things in there that we want to modify and incorporate the latest ordinance that was passed to certain risk. I'm also reviewing the income tax code. There's changes that were required because of two state laws that were passed, House Bill Five and House Bill Forty-Nine, dramatically changed how municipal compensation is administered in Ohio. I believe the changes that council approved related to House Bill Five were probably sufficient. I'm not sure that we don't need to update the eco-tax code for House Bill Forty-Nine, but I'll report back to you in a few weeks on that. Spent some time, too, trying to get a determination of what the correct balances are in our system. The accounting system, as you know, was converted at the beginning part of this year. So whatever reports could be generated, I want to make sure that those beginning numbers are solid. I also met with the auditors, who did the audit for last year, and they are helping me to get some background on the work papers to confirm some of those balances as well. So I would expect that we'll be able to get some reports to the council on revenues and expenses within about a week to 10 days, and also statements on cash position. Going to try and consolidate some of those reports. I think they're a little more expansive. When they built the system and designed it, there was probably a little bit too much information there. I think we want to give you more, about a thousand-foot view of what's going on that easily could be supplemented by additional information. So give me another week or so, we should, I appreciate it, to give that to you. At least I want to be able to make sure that the information is correct in that beginning balance of the year.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Kennedy? Very good. Welcome aboard. Next up is Director of Law, Mr. McCombe.
No report to see.
Very good. Thank you. Next up is Public Safety, Mr. Police, Chief Rogers.
Mayor, no report.
Very good. Fire?
Thank you, Mayor. Last week, I participated in a training drill with staff from the Fire Department as well as the Police Department that was held by the Cleveland Jewish Federation, sponsored by FEMA. It was a tabletop exercise on active threats involving our city as well as Cleveland Heights and Beachwood. And it was a pretty expansive drill, a lot of good information and networking opportunities, and precursor to a more full-scale drill that they're planning for next year. So a good opportunity. Glad they invited us to join them in that. Also, this coming Wednesday, the 6th, at 6:00 PM, we'll be doing the formal swearing-in for our last four new hires. They've been on now for a couple of months. The mayor had sworn them in formally, so this will be the formal ceremony for our families to come attend. You're all welcome to join. I had sent out an email invitation to council, but I have been having some difficulties with email, and I suspect that you probably do not get that. So I apologize for the late notice, but we'll have food afterwards, and the ceremony will be upstairs in the counseling rooms, and the food will be downstairs in the fire station. So you're all welcome to join. And last, it was just a tip. State Fire Marshal puts out monthly newsletters. This month's topic was carbon monoxide awareness with the cold snap and everyone firing up their furnaces. He just wants to exercise caution to have your appliances checked by repairmen that are licensed to make sure they're not emitting CO, and to also make sure that you purchase a carbon monoxide detector for your home, having at least one model of appliances, and also safe in regard to electrocuteers and that sort, to make sure that there's nothing combustible in those. And we'll be putting something out on the webpage as far as that goes for this month as well.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Chief Burko. Any other questions for Chief Burko? They'll be seeing you Wednesday at 6:00 PM at the formal swearing-in.
Thank you.
Next up is Service, Mr. Corbin.
Just a quick update on leaf collection. We are in full swing, collecting leaves with the vacuum machines along the curbsides. We currently have three crews out every day, and we've already made it around the city five times. That's going to slow a little bit with this pass after this weekend's weather and the leaves starting to come down, but we will be promoting this until it's complete, probably through the first week of December. Second item, tree planting. Go ahead.
Where do the pumpkins go?
Pumpkins could go in your lawn leaf bags, or they can go in your garbage.
But they can't go in the leaf pile?
No, they cannot get swept up by the vacuum. They can go in the leaf pile, but they'll be there. If you leave them on your tree lawn separately, away from the leaf pile, we collect them when we do the lawn leaf bags. So generally, people will leave them either in or next to the lawn leaf bags, and we collect them when we do those.
Or separate from the leaf pile. Correct.
Or even squirrels can be. Second item is tree planting. Some time back, you authorized the purchase of trees. We've selected those trees from the nurseries. They are getting delivered this week. We hope to have the trees planted in the north-southwest section of town during the month of November.
Did you say the north-southwest?
Yeah, the southwest. Most of these are going in last year's pruning area, which was Ashurst, Eaton, Sabre, those areas up to Warrensville, south of Meadowbrook.
Part of town I got hit by in the night. Took down a little week still. Hey, I was just recording still.
That was at the stand-up by report there.
Very good. Any questions for Mr. Corbin? All right, very good. Thank you, sir. Next up is Building. Mr. McReynolds.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Couple things tonight. First, a report on the permit statistics for the month of October. We took in a total of $17,408.89 for an estimated cost of construction of $2,049,0219. This compares with last year, when we took in $23,669 during the same period of time, that is, the month of October, for estimated cost of construction of $3,103,794. I provided these figures to Cali Court of Counsel, so that they have them a feel. In addition, work is continuing on the community in McLa, on Regrow. The expected date of completion is sometime after the beginning of the year. During the construction phase, we've had the sidewalks out, which has caused some recent complaints to come our way. So I wanted to relate to that. Talked with the new superintendent over there, and the sidewalks are scheduled to be put in this Friday, so that people will be able to block at least north and south of that side of the street. The infill home, the partnership between the city and Kennesaw's, at 3761, is scheduled for the ARB on November 14. The BZA has rescheduled its meeting date for November 20, and the paving commission will meet on November 21. Another note, ownership of Tibor's Meats has transferred to Kerry Senders and his family, and they've contacted me about some modern expansions to rear, and they want to install some more coolers and things like that. And that's all I have for you.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. McReynolds. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. McReynolds? Second, thank you, I'm sorry. Next is City Engineer, Mr. Juney.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. To address the mid-block crossings question that came up earlier in the meeting, there was a button, push button that was stuck. It was in one of the medians where you get halfway through and you push the button again, it was stuck. Those lights were on for the last day and a half. We did get that corrected today. They were just flashing away. If you drove down there, you saw that. The contractor was aware of it. Mayor made me aware of it last night, but I couldn't be holdin' contractors out there this morning to begin to fix it. The contract is not closed out yet, so the contractor has to come back until we're satisfied. We're not paying him extra to keep coming back and fix this, as was heard earlier this evening. Paving projects, Groveland has been paved, it's completed now, so has Churchill. There was a small part of Churchill where we needed... There was a small part of Churchill where we needed to add some catch basins, and we added those basins, and we finished the paving, and that was all done about a week ago. The waterline project on Washington Boulevard is now completed, and they picked up all the bypass piping, all the houses are hooked up now, and the paving contractor started there today. So we're right behind them with the paving. The grinding started today, the first layer of asphalt will be placed on Wednesday, and we have some curbs to replace and some catch basins to rebuild, and then the final course will be put down near the end of the month. And that's the end of my report.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Chuni. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Chuni? Mr. Weisman?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Chuni, the new crosswalk at Silsby-ish and Green Road with the two lights facing each other?
Correct.
So those lights are not working?
Correct.
Okay. You're aware of that?
Yes. It was broken. It hooks up into the controller, which goes across campus. Beachwood has had campus under construction all year, with their waterline projects, so the conduit that's in the street there was going to be dug out by the waterline, which it was, and it has not been replaced. We knew it was broken last year when we put those PED signals in, and we, I also knew that the waterline project was coming, so we didn't dig it up. They have not replaced it yet. It's a part of their contract to do because of waterline guy dug it up. So as soon as that conduit gets replaced and gets rewired, those PED signals will be working.
Do we think that'll be done before the winter hits?
We're trying to get it done, and as soon as we can.
And people still, I guess they aren't aware that that's a crosswalk, so they park actually on the red bricks.
They stop there to mean if there's lights?
Yes. So if you want to cross, you have to actually walk around the cars, you know, or, you know, tap their hood as you're walking by. They love that. But I don't know, they moved the red line, the white line back now in front of the, but they just do not stop now, so.
It's kind of an enforcement thing.
Is there a remedy for that?
If we, if the chief, or the police monitor a little bit, give out a couple tickets, maybe they would help.
I don't know. Recommended tickets.
I hear you. Suggesting maybe another sign be added, maybe stop here.
I was thinking maybe, but the lights face each other, so the cars are going to see the lights, the walkers on the lights. Maybe when they change and people walk, and people stop parking there. It looks nice.
It is a pedestrian area. There are a lot of walkers, there's no question.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Weisman. Next, Mr. Chuni, were there any other questions for Mr. Chuni? Thank you, sir. Next up is Communication and Civic Engagement, Mr. Cook.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. As Mayor suggested earlier, we met with Audrey Nguyen from the Census Bureau last week, and she seems to be impressed with the work that we're doing to get the city ready for the census. One good thing that came out of the meeting, a lot of good things, but I think the main takeaway was, while we're focused on the hard-to-reach audiences for the census, which include renters, and they include families with young children and people who've recently moved, a major concern we had earlier was how we were going to count students at John Carroll. To make a long story short, basically, the Census Bureau now just contacts the university, says how many kids you have on campus, and JSC will say three thousand and change, and that'll be it. So the census count for campus is done, so that takes, proves up a lot of time and energy and money that we'd be spending, you know, chasing college kids around, trying to get them to, yeah, hey, give me some pizza, take out your phone, let's do the census. So now we can concentrate on renters and young children in town. So I think we are definitely on track to have a good turnout, to have a good count next spring for the census. Also, as Mayor suggested earlier, the civic wards are a week from Wednesday. Canvas at John Carroll University starts at six-thirty. Tickets are available now. Get them soon, or, you know, either buy them online or email Rachel Mallon that she wants to attend, or send an email or forward it to her. And we are going to have a big crowd. We're going to be packed like sardines in the jardine next week, so look forward to another successful event there. And finally, the mosaic magazine comes out next week. We'll probably have it at City Hall. Talked to Cleveland Jewish News this morning. Probably have it on Thursday, so if you're dying for a copy, send one to City Hall or give me a call, and I'll bring one out to you. It should be hitting mailboxes. The holiday is on Monday, so people should probably be getting that on Tuesday next week. That's it.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Cook. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Cook? Very good. Very good. All right, next up is Economic Development, Mrs. Rucker.
Good evening, Council, and Mayor. Just one quick announcement, tomorrow, the mayor, Hector Groban Myers and I will be going to the school board meeting. We are on the agenda, request approval for a LOI that would be to transfer the four parcels that are located east of Taylor across the wind, which we identified as the residential hatch district. So we're looking for them to transfer four parcels to the city so that they proceed with that development. So we are on the agenda tomorrow, so I guess we'll be back in this room tomorrow night.
Sure.
Just keeping Council, please.
Very good. Thank you, Mrs. Rucker. Any questions for Mrs. Rucker? Second, thank you. Next up is Housing and Community Development, Mr. Groban Myers.
Thank you, Mayor. Just briefly, the county's accepting community development block grant applications that are due December sixth, so I just wanted to give you guys a heads up that at the next council meeting, we will be considering a resolution of support, and me asking for your support. Not quite ready to release our project application yet, and in what we're talking about, but we are working, the Housing and Community Development Department with the Fire Prevention Bureau, we're working together to formulate an application. So stay tuned for details, and we'll be making a formal presentation at the next council meeting.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Groban Myers. Any questions for Mr. Groban? Excuse me, Mr. Groban Myers. All right, very good. Thank you, sir. Turning now to reports from standing committees, Building, Mr. Weisman? No report, Mayor. Any significant information? Mrs. Cameron? Thank you, Mrs. Cameron. Finance, Mrs. Hurdie is not here this evening. She's going to do a family matter. Does anybody from the finance committee have a report they were talking this evening? Seeing non-governmental affairs, Mrs. Wise also has a family matter this evening. Anybody from the governmental affairs committee have a report? Seeing recreation, Mr. Erdel? No report. Safety, Mr. Rock?
Yes, Mayor. We would need to have a meeting in the next month or so. Let's begin with police chief, and a few things on his agenda that he would like to discuss with our council at a committee meeting, mainly on extension of what we've already discussed in the previous meeting, the towing services, the King unit, et cetera, and then also offer fire chief, if he has any suggestions for upcoming meeting, and try to get all of those things. So I will reach out to the clerk to call the group on a few days.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Rock. Service and Utilities, Mr. Sims? No report. Mr. Sims, you may be calling for a meeting, but there was a shortage of people to make on the, call upon. Yes. Yes, members of the police should be looking out for a certain date or something. Very good. To me, the whole, Mrs. Hurdie, she's not here. Anybody have a report on the afternoon of the whole? Second, we included the matters on the agenda. There's nothing to do with business, I'll accept a motion, adjourned. Submoved.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Weisman, second by Mr. Rock. Mrs. Thomas, speak, Waldorf.
Mr. Rock.
Aye.
Mr. Weisman.
Aye.
Mr. Sims.
Aye.
Mr. Erdel.
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron.
Aye.
Very good. We are adjourned. May I have a good night?